And I'll go to the clerk to identify any items to add or delete, Madam Clerk.
There are no items to add or delete, Your Worship.
Thank you. But for a mover and a seconder, that the agenda for the committee of the whole meeting out on May 10, 2021 be confirmed to circulate, moved by Councilor McCallum, second by Councilor Noah, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Anyone has a curi- interesting claim in our when the item comes up? Okay, I hear it. Counselor Beatty?
Wrong button. Sorry, Your Worship. CW five two, please, as family members own property that abuts the bridge. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I have one, uh, CW four one, and at that time I'll ask the Deputy Mayor to take over. And look for a mover and a seconder that the agenda for the committee of the whole meeting, I'm sorry, before we resume, uh, ask council to identify any. No, sorry, we'll go with the clerk to identify items for separate discussion and the reason they're out, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. So we have items CW three one, water supply. We have two deputations with us this evening. Uh, CW four one, Bell Mobility Incorporated License Extension Agreement, six eight three zero fourth line Tottenham. There was a pecuniary interest declared. CW five two, update tender T twenty one eleven BD Bridge Crossing Utilities Relocation. There was a pecuniary interest declared. As well as CS one seven one six three third line New Tecumseh, direction is required. And CS two verbal report of the CIO Collingwood to Alston Pipeline of and Supply of Water Strategy, next steps, uh, verbal direction.
Sorry about that. I wrote a council to identify items for separate discussion. Most certainly. Uh, Counselor Harrison McIntyre.
Thank you, Your Worship. CW five three. Set CW five five. And CW five eight.
Thank you. Counselor Foster.
Thank you, Mayor Milne. CW three one, please.
Thank you. Counselor Lacy.
Thank you, Worship. Um, CW three one. CW five one. And CW five five, please.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Noah.
Thank you, Worship. Uh, CW five eight's already been pulled. I'd like to comment, please.
Thank you. Counselor Jeff.
Uh, CW four four and the others, um, they have been pulled. So that's the only other one.
Good. Thank you. Counselor Stansberry.
Thank you, Worship. Um, I have some questions on CW four three. And some of the others have been pulled and I'll just wait my turn here, Worship.
I'll go back to the clerk to summarize the items for separate discussion.
Thank you, Worship. The items requiring separate discussion are CW three one, water supply. CW four one, Bell Mobility Incorporated License Extension Agreement, six eight three zero fourth line Tottenham. CW four three, twenty twenty one tax rates and tax levying bylaw. CW four four, accessible transportation for residents of New Tecumseh. CW five one, award to Canadians Pacific Railway for Mill Street Tottenham Railway Crossing Warning Signal Updates. CW five two, update tender T two one eleven BD Bridge Crossing Utility Relocation. CW five three, site alteration and fill by law update. CW five five, remediation of the third line Canadian specific rail tracks to side row ten. CW five eight, Riverdale Park ICIP Grant Funding Update. CS one seven one six three third line New Tecumseh. CS two verbal update of the CIO Collingwood to Alston Pipeline and Supply of Water Strategy and Next Steps. I'm sorry, Your Worship. What number was that?
CW five four, I believe, Counselor Lacy. Hold on. No.
Sorry, no, no, it's five. Five fives.
Okay, thank you. Looks for a mover and a seconder that all items not identified for separate discussion be received. And the recommendation there and be recommend to council for adoption, mover and seconder. Counselor Stansberry, Counselor Jeff, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. And, uh, counsel, what we'll do, we'd like, I'd like to do is move CW three one, uh, the water supply up because we have two, people in public that wish to speak to it instead of them sitting. So with your approval, I'd like to do that. We will call CW three. Uh, one and our first speaker will be Laurie Napples. Good evening, Laurie. Welcome.
Hi. Thank you, Mayor Milne, members of council for this opportunity to address water supply. Council has heard me speak about Tottenham's water and about my disgust over the urine colored tap water that the town of New Tecumseh on some days delivers to Tottenham homes, schools, daycares, recreation facilities and businesses. I believe filtration should be installed at Tottenham's Mill Street Water Plant to provide clean water to residents as a water quality solution along with the pipeline as the water supply solution. However, right now I'd like to speak about residential water conservation for New Tecumseh in Alston, Beaton and Tottenham. New Tecumseh's water supply is not guaranteed. Groundwater wells often have a life. They aren't always forever. Groundwater well quality can change unexpectedly. Our aquifer levels go up and down and compose a water supply constraints during the summer months. And relying on a water pipeline owned by another municipality leaves New Tecumseh vulnerable as we are currently experiencing. With Ontario's ever-growing population, we have the very real potential for water scarcity. Therefore, New Tecumseh needs residential water conservation programs to protect our water supply. Investing in more proactive and dynamic water conservation messaging and initiatives is critical. Many other municipalities have robust water conservation websites and programs that our town can investigate and borrow from and in some cases partner with. A fifty dollar rebate on the purchase of a new rain barrel is a spit in the bucket, pun intended, and does not represent a comprehensive residential water conservation program. The town needs stricter water restrictions in the summer months so that more and more residents turn to rain collection for the water they need to water their grass and gardens as well as to wash their cars. A rain barrel program or better yet, a multi-rain barrel program should also include an installation option to secure commitment. Our town needs to educate residents with seminars and video teaching tools to provide best practices such as how to mulch. The six to twelve inch mulch piles and volcano mulching piles I see around town are killing our tree sap saplings. And these are often town-planted and town mulched young trees. Partnerships with local nurseries to encourage drought-resistant flower and seed plantings could include giveaways or low-cost purchase options for no water or low-water plants, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. There is so much to residential water conservation, so much more. I'm not an expert on this, but I do recognize that residential water conservation to protect our water supply is becoming essential. The town needs to invest in water conservation efforts now, sustainab- sustainability efforts now when we have the time to plan and create options rather than tomorrow when we're in a water crisis. I do hope that a boat robust water conservation program can be addressed soon as one possible measure to protect our town's water supply and one possible sustainability tool to invest in our future. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Laurie. Any questions from council? Thank you very much for your input, Laurie. Uh, next speaker is Jessica Jarvis.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, I have a few questions, uh, not so much comments, mainly because I spoke to council at a committee of the whole meeting early last year. Um, it was February or March and at that point in time I had asked, um, when, because at the meeting there was a presentation, uh, negotiations were still ongoing with Collingwood and I had asked when, um, the town thought that negotiations would be finished and, uh, I can't remember who it was, but someone answered middle of the summer twenty twenty. Obviously that didn't happen and now in the report, um, it's saying that there were uh, reasons for that. And I was wondering if that was related to COVID nineteen setting in and a delay as a result of that.
Okay, questions? I'll direct it to, uh, uh, but Patrick. And then back to the CIO. I'll go with, I'll go to the CIO again.
Thank you, Mayor Milne. And through you to, uh, Ms. Jarvis, um, you are correct, Ms. Jarvis. Uh, earlier in twenty twenty, there were a few outstanding issues that, uh, required uh, further discussion between ourselves and the town of Collingwood. Um, and, um, it did, uh, certainly get impeded by, um, the pandemic that, uh, that hit uh, in March, April last year. So yes, those discussions were obviously impeded, um, considerably by uh, us and and Collingwood having to turn their attention to, um, um, o- other issues that were COVID nineteen related. Uh, but the agreement was progressing well at that time and we were down to just a couple of, uh, items left to clear up.
And where does it stand now? I'm looking at the report, um, it says that the report also outlines various options for Collingwood to consider to address their issue. These include engineering solutions such as accelerating the treatment plant expansion and upgrades as well as looking at New Tecumseh and the Blue Mountains to reduce the volumes that they are currently provided. So is there the potential for New Tecumseh to get less than even the water that it's receiving right now, the ninety five hundred cubic meters per day?
Hold of the CIO.
Mayor Milne, through you, two members of, uh, council and Ms. Jarvis. Yes, council or Collingwood's council has directed their staff to, uh, discuss things with New Tecumseh with respect to is there any possibility of New Tecumseh or the town of Blue Mountains, uh, receiving less than their current, um, volumes at this point in time and over the next short or the next near future. So yes, that's what Collingwood's council has directed their staff to, uh, speak to the town of New Tecumseh about whether that will, uh, what will that materialize in? Um, that's difficult to say at this point, but that's certainly something that we will be discussing with our council uh, with respect to our strategy and our next steps moving forward.
Um, I suppose then my question goes to council and that is, I don't know if I can even ask this or you can answer it, but what is your perspective on this? Because certainly councillors from Tottenham are pretty invested in trying to get this pipeline in place and their residents having good quality water like Alston and Beaton. And so if this is now what Collingwood is presenting, even less water than currently the whole town is getting, um, how does council feel about that and what will happen or what will you do to ensure that this does not happen, that the town does not get less water than it currently is?
I, I can possibly add to that and council, we would like to also, we, we will keep our CIO, keep investing and, and negotiate with Collingwood. Uh, we don't feel that we should have to give up uh, a drop of water, actually anything. We think we should need more water, but negotiations are still ongoing. And for, uh, that's all I can see at this point. Let's see, Counselor Lacy, but you're carried up.
Thank you, Worship. Um, and Ms. Jarvis, that's actually an excellent question. Um, I don't believe our council has really had a chance to go over all of the details. Um, I also had some, some comments regarding the report that you're referring to. Um, one of the, the key concepts that, that caught me was that, um, the, the negotiations for the extended contract and our volume, uh, our supply um, sort of stalled a bit last year. Obviously, um, we don't know exactly why Collingwood wasn't getting back to us. It could be because of the situation. But it, it seems that we had negotiated everything except for price. Um, and we're now, they're now wanting to open it back up and revisit additional items. I believe personally that we're now in the driving seat. If anything is to open up, we've got to stick to our guns. We've got to get what we've been promised. Um, what we've negotiated, which is the ninety five hundred, uh, cubic meters per day. We shouldn't be changing that. And if they want to reopen the negotiations, we're in the driving seat now, right? You know, there's a lot we can do to, to make it better for ourselves if they want to open it back up. But I think in, in good faith, they've, they've agreed to a, a, an agreement. We should move forward with that and we should move forward with, um, you know, getting, getting more supply into Tottenham and, and working where we should with Collingwood.
Good. Thanks, Counselor. Jessica, we do have an in-camera meeting tonight where we'll be discussing about the Collingwood water. And we have our speakers sitting on listening now, so, yeah, it's, it's not over.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Lacy, uh, did you have anything more to?
No, I think we're good. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Counselor McCallum.
Uh, thank you, Worship. I'm wondering if we can add to, um, or move an entirely different motion that maybe the environmental committee have a, have a look at, uh, possible water conservation efforts that that we're not doing that we could do. I think that would be a great thing for the environmental committee to take a peek at.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much, Jessica, again.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Thank you. Counselor Harrison McIntyre.
Thank you, Worship. Yeah, I was taking notes and I was going to bring that, um, to our work, working session for the environmental committee um, as one of the items to add to our work plan. So I don't know that we need a, a motion for it. I think, um, Counselor Jeb and I will just bring it forward.
If there is any more questions, I'll go ahead with the motion that the report of CIO, uh, twenty twenty one zero five, be received. All in favor? Oh, mover and seconder, so, Counselor Jeb and Counselor McCallum, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. We'll go back now to, uh, on CW four one, I have a conflict of interest. Now, the Deputy Mayor to chair.
Thank you, Your Worship. CW four one, Corporate Services. Bell Mobility Incorporated License Extension Agreement, six eight three zero fourth line Tottenham. I have a recommendation that report number admin two zero two one dash one eight be received. And for that a bylaw be enacted authorizing the mayor and the clerk to enter into a license extension agreement with Bell Mobility Inc. Subject to final clearance by town solicitor. Do you have a mover and a seconder, please? Counselor Harrison McIntyre, Counselor Jeb, is there any comments or questions on the recommendation? I'm not seeing any. Okay, all those in favor, please? Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Next one is CW four three, I believe it's, just before we go, Counselor Foster.
Thank you, Mayor Milne. CW three one, I know you, you moved that ahead for the deputations, but I, I had pulled that.
You did, I'm sure.
Counselor Lacy, I'm not sure if he got his comments in, but, uh, we got shortchanged, so we.
You did so.
Let me know how you want to handle that procedure.
I'm, I'm sure we want to hear from you.
Are you sure?
Yes.
Uh, thank you and Mayor Milne, I appreciate that. Um, what I wanted to, in the report from the, uh, from the CIO on page two, uh, the water supply agreement expired in May twenty twenty, but because of circumstances at the time, New Tecumseh and Collingwood continue to operate under the terms of the expired agreement. My question was, is, was there a written agreement or memorandum of understanding between the two parties that we would carry on under the existing terms? And I don't want to cross over into anything that'll be discussed in camera, but, uh, so if that is an in-camera discussion, please, someone cut me off, but if not, that's, that's the question I had for the CIO.
Of the CIO.
Thank you, Mayor Milne, and through you to Counselor Foster, members of council. Um, no, there's nothing specific, Counselor Foster, with respect to, uh, extending the agreement. Both parties, uh, mutually agreed at the time that we just continue to work under, um, under the circum or under the, the terms and conditions of the existing agreement. And both parties have, have been doing that in good faith, recognizing that we were at that time extremely close to finalizing or what we thought was finalizing, uh, a new water supply agreement. Um, you know, there were no issues at that time, so both parties just mutually agreed that we'll just continue under them. Uh, and neither party took any other, uh, steps to, uh, terminate or anything like that. So uh, everything was, was being done in good faith and, and the discussions were continuing on at that point. And as I said, there were um, just a couple of issues left to, to finalize prior to bringing them to our respective councils.
Absolutely. Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, supplementary. I just want to, just wanted for the, for the, for the sake of everyone, the council meeting in Collingwood last week, two weeks ago, it was on the twenty sixth, and it occurred simultaneously with our council meeting. But I did go back and watch it. It is a fascinating read. And I was struck by a couple of things, and I think this is important for, for people to recognize, is that it was a staff report that came out. And what it was is it had, had, um, three motions. The first motion, um, well, it was all related to the water. And it, and it speaks, it speaks to sort of path that I think that Collingwood is, is starting to take. And I, I know the CIO has spoken to good faith and about confidence being shaken, but I will just for the benefit, if you can disindulge me for a second, is that here's what the motion originally was going to read. And the council directs staff to obtain legal advice on the risks associated with proceeding to issue the request for a proposal. It was, there was an amendment made by one of the councillors, and I spoke to the, uh, one of the people in the clerk's department up there today. And that these motions have been ratified, but the minutes have not, not out. He changed the motion to read and the council directs staff to issue as soon as practical request for a proposal for engineering services for the design and contract, um, uh, administration. Oh, sorry, um, drinking water treatment plant expansion via to a completed water supply agreement with the town of New Tecumseh. That's the next step in securing safe and reliable expanded water treatment capacity. It, it was really not, it was a certain, um, if you soften the meeting, they were, they were in a hurry to move ahead with things. And the implications for them at, uh, moving ahead without seeking even legal advice because essentially we are in a partner there. So I think that's a big concern. And the last section that I thought was interesting, other motion that was amended, it said in that staff initiate discussions with the town of New Tecumseh and the town of Blue Mountains to reduce the amount of water supply these municipalities. The amendment that was voted on, and I believe was voted on seven to two, I, I believe. And that acknowledging there is not currently a water supply agreement in place with the, with the town of New Tecumseh. Tecumseh staff continue discussions with TNT and the town of Blue Mountains to reclaim as much water as possible until the water treatment plant expansion is complete. So it looks, it would appear as if they've stepped up the language in terms of, of, um, trying to get themselves out of, um, out of their dilemma, which was clearly articulated by their CIO in the preamble to the meeting. There was a recognition that demand is outstripped supply. So, um, I, I just wanted to, to give that to council and recommend that anyone in this council should watch that by a meeting because it's fascinating and it gives some real insight into, I think, the potential problems that they're into. And it's also important to note that they did pass an indemnification bylaw as the third bylaw in the night. They passed an interim control bylaw. They then amended these two motions and they ended it with a, an indemnification clause, which was, uh, far-reaching. So I would have let people draw their own conclusions, but I don't think anybody should believe that we are, we are not in for some, uh, battle. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor and then Counselor Jeff.
Thanks, Your Worship. And I just, Mr. CEO, please, I don't want to compromise the municipality. So if you can't answer, I just really have one question. If you can't answer it, ask one in camera. I certainly understand because I have a lot of questions. What I comment is in, you know, twenty seventeen, we paid over half a million dollars to Collingwood for upgrades of the plant. It never happened. Twenty nineteen, we paid over half a million dollars again for upgrades. It never happened. So my question, that's just two questions of a lot that I have. Simply, how did we end up where we are today? Are you able to, in a nutshell, explain how this happened and how we got here?
I'll go to the CIO.
Thank you, Mayor Milne, and through you to Deputy Mayor Narcross. Though those two amounts that you cited, Deputy Mayor, um, the work was done on the Collingwood plant at those time so that the, in seventeen and nineteen, the town's proportionment, those, um, upgrades and membrane replacements did occur. Um, as to how we got here, um, I would certainly look to the, the Collingwood staff report that speaks to, uh, the challenges that they've incurred uh, over the past little while, I think, um, lays out the, um, the how we got here part extremely well. The explanation provided in there, we're still, um, working on understanding exactly the, the details of, um, uh, of, of how that happened. But, and that's what I referenced in the report as being concerning. Obviously mistakes are made sometimes and, and things are done with, uh, with good intentions and we all realize at the end of, uh, the day that sometimes there's other ways or better ways to go. But, um, you know, those, uh, there's certainly, we're, we're certainly trying to, to still understand all the details of it.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Your Worship. Um, I just read in there that, um, it, it said these investments did not occur, uh, with the plant. So I assumed it to be that the money was not, um, was not spent. So maybe I misun, misinterpreted the report wrong or I took it out of context. So I, I will clarify. That's what I was referring to, Mr. CEO. And, and thank you for an honest attempt to answer that question. Thank you, Worship.
This is CIO.
Thank you, Mayor Milne. Uh, the investments that I was referring to that did not happen, um, deputy mayor was the uh, items that were listed in, I believe, a schedule B of the original water supply agreement laid out a, a rough timeline of when, um, increased volumes to New Tecumseh would occur and, uh, the items or the, uh, the upgrades that would have to happen in the plant. Um, and from, uh, review of those, the, the history of, uh, of the situation, neither party initiated those discussions with respect to increasing those volumes beyond the initial increase from six thousand to ninety five hundred. And those And those, it's those investments that I was referring to that did not occur.
That makes sense. Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. C E O.
Thank you, Councilor Jeb.
Thank you, your worship. Through you to the C A O. Maybe you know, uh, they're talking about renegotiating. Are they going to be working with the New Tecumseh Improvement Society? Which they are a member or are they just working outside on their own and not including the N T I S?
C A O.
Thank you, Mayor Milton. Through you to Councilor Jeb and members of, of committee. N T I S in most aspects would not be included in these discussions because N T I S is the majority holder of the pipeline. Not involved in the actual water supply. So it depends on what the future steps are of, of N T I S with respect to their own future and how. Uh, the pipeline is, uh, is managed, but, um, so it's, it's not a, it's not an easy question to answer, Councilor Jeb, but the water supply itself is generally just between the. Two municipalities, ourselves and Collingwood. N T I S, uh, again, being the majority holder of the pipeline. Is, is just that, not necessarily the water within the pipeline.
Councilor Lacy.
Thank you, your worship. Um. Through you to the C A O. Um, just to expand on the deputy mayor. Um, I believe twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen, we, we did membrane upgrades. Um, it, that same paragraph sort of references that in September of twenty twenty. Um, we received correspondence that I guess the replacements and upgrades needed to be done again. Is that for the membrane, membranes?
C A O.
Thank you, Mayor Milton. Through you to Councilor Lacy and members of committee. I believe one of the upgrades that they were looking at was another train of membranes. Uh, there would probably be a, a number of, of membrane trains within the treatment process. I believe there was other. Uh, upgrades or repairs that were required to the actual facility itself that were contained or identified in that email. Uh, basically giving us the heads up that these were the, uh, anticipated works that the town of Collingwood was looking to take on within, uh, the following few months.
Supplemental, your worship.
Hi, Councilor Lacy.
Thank you. Um, and then it, it, it talks about referencing article eleven of the current water supply agreement. Is that the agreement that expired in May twenty twenty, or is there a different agreement on that?
Mr. C A O.
Thank you, Mayor Milton. Uh, through you to Councilor Lacy and members of committee know that would be the original water supply agreement, Councilor Lacy, and that. Uh, speaks to again, uh, their reference to that article in, in their email in, uh, the current water supplement, water supply agreement. Again, speaks to the goodwill and the good faith. It was, uh, being, uh, exercised by both municipalities at that time that we were continuing to function under. Uh, all articles of, of that current water supply agreement.
Thank you.
Great discussion. Thanks, Councilor Foster. Uh, we'll move on to C W four three, and I believe it's something they had a question.
Uh, thank you, your worship. I threw you, I guess, to the treasurer or Miss Bedford perhaps. Anyway, the bylaw at the back, I just had a question related to the date that was in it. Uh, read it first, second and third time and finally passed the twenty fourth day of May. Because of the long weekend, I think maybe that should be the thirty first day of May. It's just clarification, but we don't sit on it to play for it. And this is a committee, so it would go to council, I think. Page six or six.
Through your worship, I'll ask the treasurer just to speak to that.
Mr. Henry. Councilor Sainsbury, I, I believe she's correct. I think I was just probably, uh. Uh, an error that we made thinking that council was going to be held on that Monday, so we can make that adjustment and bring it forward to the, the proper council date.
Thanks very much, Mr. Henry.
So I'll move back here, worship. Four three.
Move by Councilor Jeb, second, uh, sorry, move by Councilor Sainsbury, effect by Councilor Jeb, that report of. Then twenty twenty one dash eleven be received. And further that the twenty twenty one tax levy by law being attached at one to report of finish twenty twenty one. Uh, dash eleven be enacted. All favor. Harry, thank you. Councilor Jeb, C W four four.
Uh, thank you, your worship. Um, at the bottom of page two of seven about the simple links plus services. And they offer prearranged door to door public service within four hundred meters of existing routes for registered users. Um, can we get further information on that and how do people get registered to do that? And I don't, I can't see the bus showing up at somebody's doorstep. So how does this work? So if we could get some more information on that.
I'll go to Babalina, your chair.
Thank you, Mayor Mill. Uh, through you to Councilor Jeb. Individuals can seek information on the Simcoe County website. But I can certainly, uh, look into that further. I was under the understanding that they would actually go. Door to door for the accessibility bus, um, within four hundred meters from, uh, the route. Um, but I can clarify that, but I did, do you understand that that is how that works? Because it is. Uh, they do know who they're picking up in advance and they will go in those designated spots.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Sainsbury.
Uh, thank you, worship. Just following up on that, if chats do this for us rather than the links bus, which is. Not going to help people in Greenbrier very much or Blair Hill. I think chats will come to their home. We really need to support that chats program and perhaps even consider putting something like we used to do into the grants and donations toward chats. Because then we wouldn't have to run our own service. It would be, it wouldn't be any different than the program we had that was subsidized for seniors with the taxi people. Who no longer wish to do it. So I, I prefer the chats, uh, to the links. I saw the links bus yesterday afternoon. No, Friday afternoon in front of the N T R C and the gentleman who drives it is standing there. Nobody was around. There was a taxi parked in the corner. So obviously he wasn't going anywhere to pick anybody up at present time. So I, I'm not too sure just how long this project is going on as a pilot project, but. It doesn't seem to be having as many riders as we had hoped. But I know the seniors do need help because they don't drive a lot of them due to house and age. Thank you.
Councilor Lacy and then Councilor Jeb.
Thank you, worship. Um. The, the chat's program seems to be a lot more versatile for, for a lot of regions. Um, number one, the, as everybody's aware, the, the links program doesn't even come close to Tottenham. So. Um, anybody down here would have to use some other methods. So the chat's program seems to do it. Um, and if you're with four hundred meters isn't too far off of a road. Um, so it really doesn't hit a lot of, a lot of people that, that could really use us.
Good, thank you. Uh, so. Staff, uh, sorry, council, did you want to refer it back to staff, Councilor Jeb?
Thank you, your worship. Um, also clarification that the chats absolutely we used to, we gave them donations in the past. But the chats only goes to the age of eighteen. And with that taxi service we had with children that needed to go to, um, medical appointments. Um, we've got to still consider them and chats doesn't take anybody under the age of eighteen. So we still need to consider that as well.
Councilor Jeb, what did you want to do with it?
Oh. Um. Well, I like the idea of supporting chats that Councilor Sainsbury had said, maybe we could put that into next year's budget for the grants. What are your wishes, Councilor Sainsbury?
Well, I, I, I think we need a further report that the first tonight, I guess we could choose that we're going to deal with chats and then fine tune it with the help of staff. And just see what chats was, is able to do and if they'll come to, to pick up people and, uh, they come now to Greenbrier if you phone them. So that would be helpful.
Director Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Milton. Councilor Jeb, um, the chat's program actually does apply to individuals over eighteen. Not up to eighteen. It's eighteen and over for, uh, disability, uh, needs. And anybody over age sixty five that can't drive. So it does cover the whole. Uh, population in need for accessible transportation.
Councilor Jeb.
I had, I had said chi- children, people under eighteen, like children aged seven to ten. That's who I was referring to. Uh, Ms. Thompson. So would they take people under eighteen? That's what I was thinking of. I don't think they do.
Director.
Through Mayor Milton to Councilor Jeb. Um, I, my apologies. Um, I'd have to look into that, uh, but under there. The, the information that they provide to the public, they say over eighteen with a disability. Um, I'd have to look into that further for you.
Councilor Lacy.
Um, I'm, I'm just wondering. Over eighteen, I could see with a disability, if you're traveling on yourself, but if you're a, you know, a person disabled and traveling with a parent. Um, under eighteen, can we check into that? Because that, that would seem more logical in my mind.
Right. So why don't we send it back to staff to come back with another report? Mover and second, Councilor Jeb, Councilor Lacy. Thank you. All in favor? Thanks, Babalina. Now, C W five one, uh, Councilor Lacy.
Thank you, worship. Um, just one little thing with this one. Um, this has been a long awaited, uh, item. Um, I know staff has been working hard and, and everybody's working hard on this. And my question is, is do we have a timeline for these to be installed? I didn't see anything in the report. Or an estimate?
I'll go to Mr. Hoppy.
I'm sorry, your worship. Could you repeat the question?
Councilor Lacy.
Thank you, uh, Director Hoppy or G M Hoppy, sorry, my apologies. Um, I was just wondering if we had a timeline for the installation or an estimated timeline?
Uh, through your worship, I don't have a specific answer on that. I'm wondering if, um, director could, could answer that question.
Yes, um, through your worship to Councilor Lacy. Typically with these types of installations, what happens is. We issue us, uh, once council approves the, uh, the expenditure, we need to ship P O to C P. They would start the design. And then we start working their process. Normally they try and get it through done. I'm sorry, to try and get the works done in their fiscal year, which will end, uh, by April first of this coming year. So when approximately a year, we should have the installation complete. That would be normal, normal practice with C P.
Okay, thank you. You okay with that, Councilor Lacy?
Uh, always could use it sooner, but that's the answer.
All right, I have a motion moved by Councilor Lacy and second by, uh, Councilor Doyle. That the report of being twenty one dash fourteen be received, further that the design and construction services. Be awarded the Canadian Pacific Rail for Mill Street, uh, railway crossing warning signals upgrade. In accordance with the event of the town purchasing policy by law twenty fourteen dash one hundred. As a sole source procurement for the upset fees of one hundred and twelve thousand seven hundred and seventy six dollars. Plus H S T in accordance with the C P correspondence of April twenty third, twenty twenty one. In further contingency allowance, the amount of twelve thousand dollars plus H S T be approved. With invoice to general manager of infrastructure and development or is designated as authorized to approve the change order. Resulting due to amendment in scope of work. Further that a bylaw be enacted, authorize and bear in the clerk. To find the appropriate documents and agreements relating to the Bill Street C P rail crossing warning signal upgrade. Any questions? All in favor. Harry, thank you. C W five two, and Councilor B has a conflict of interest. But for a mover and second, as reported being twenty twenty one dash fifteen be received, Councilor McClellan and Councilor Jeb, all in favor. Oh, sorry, question from Councilor McClellan.
Thank you, worship. Um, within the report, um, about the, the costing, it says that, um, it refers to COVID nineteen impacting. The current supply of construction and materials causing significant project cost increases that we all hope are going to. Mitigate themselves next year. Um, will we be expecting any other current tender projects to be in impacted by the similar, similar market trends?
Go to the C A O.
Thank you, Mayor Milton. Um, through you to Councilor McClellan and members of committee. Um, you're asking me to dust off my crystal ball. Uh, we are seeing, uh, some tenders, uh, some more than others, uh, impacted by some of the, the things that were, um. That are being called or, uh, referred to or related to the COVID, uh, pandemic. Um, some tenders don't seem to be that impacted at all. So it's, it's really a little bit of a hit and miss thing right now. So. Um, we are watching the market obviously very closely, but, uh, right now it, um. Some things seem to be more impacted than others. We've heard the price of wood is, uh, certainly higher than, um, than what we've seen in the past, but. Um, again, it's, it's really hard to say as to whether, um, others will be impacted to this degree or, or perhaps, um, less.
Thank you. Answer your question, Councilor McClellan. Question, Councilor Sainsbury.
Uh, thank you, worship. I was just going to make a comment about the Treetop School because it'll be going out shortly and that'll be a good guide for us to follow. On that type of construction. They were held up for several years because of the cost of steel. Steel isn't our major problem in the project that we have underway. So it's going to be interesting to see how those tenders come back on the Catholic school. Okay, thank you.
All in favor? Harry, thank you. Uh, the next one is, uh, C W five three, Councilor Harrison McIntyre.
Thank you, worship. Um. As we know, because of our site plan agreement with TAC and our oversight of the work. Um, exceedances of free cyanide were found and we were able to stop any more importation of fill. Since then, nothing has been done to remove this contaminated fill, uh, soil by TAC. Um, my question is, not being familiar with the, uh, filing of record of site conditions. How will this be a positive outcome for the town of New Tecumseh and our residents?
General Manager Hoppy. Oh, I'm sorry. Director back to, sorry, Bert. Problem.
Through your worship to, uh, Councilor Harrison McIntyre. The, uh, record of site completion process is where the proponent being TAC in this case would work directly with the. Ministry of the Environment Conservation and Parks to determine how best the site could be, uh. I guess managed in such a way that could the soils be left on site? Could the soils be mitigated on site? Could the soils, do the soils need to be removed? And all those processes would be worked through and there'd be potentially a drilling program to determine where all the, all the soils on the sites and how they could be managed. And as part of that process, the experts at the ministry would be, uh, working directly with the Q P for. TAC and, uh, they would come up with a plan that I think in the long term would. Ensure that the health of the human health and the environment was respected. And again, being a higher level of government, they likely would have a. Uh, a much better way of controlling TAC and ensuring that the, the proper outcomes came out of that. I think that's how the town would benefit if TAC chose to go down that route. Uh, there, there, I think there is a true benefit to that, that taking.
Councilor Harrison, yeah. Okay, anyone else? Moved by Councilor Harris McIntyre, second by Councilor Sainsbury, that the recommendation of the report in twenty twenty one dash sixteen be received, all in favor? Harry, thank you. C W five five, I believe it comes there.
Thank you, worship. Um, I've received so many calls and emails about this road. Um, in the last couple of months, um, I'm pleased to see that it's being put forward by staff as a road to be done. There, it, there's a, a choice of options here and I would. Recommend that we go with option three. Um, this is the one that staff is supporting and this is the.
recommend that we go with option three. Um, this is the one that staff is supporting and this is the the fix of the road rather than a stopgap. Um, this will actually uh, improve the road conditions and make it a permanent. Uh, with the growth that's happened in Tottenham, the third line is being traveled a lot and we need to make that road safe for people to drive as well as to walk. Um, it's also the recommend the option is also looking for um, costing where they where the this is going to come out of budget wise and I would refer to um, Director Bedford, GM Bedford for recommendation on this.
Yeah, Bedford.
I'm sorry, through your worship, um, Counselor McIntyre, could you repeat the question for me, please?
Certainly. Um, but the way that I read this report was it was looking for a source of funding for option three.
So I might suggest the asset replacement reserve or we have also I talked about gas tax as well, so I will investigate those options with the finance department and make a recommendation as to the best one.
Okay.
Thank you.
So just to put it on the floor, I would, um, I would put the motion forward that we move forward with option three. And the funding source to be determined at our next meeting.
Deputy Mayor Norcross?
Uh, thank you, worship. I want to support the counselor and her request and I agree. I also receive lots of calls about the third line, too. I I do believe the report suggested the asset replacement fund is the preferred alternative, but certainly it's great to look at other options. So I'll support the counselors. Well, I'll second your motion, your worship, that option three go forward. And that one or two options come back for sources of financing to go ahead with this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lee.
Thank you, worship. I just have one question and I wanted to ensure that replacing this roadway, does it affect any other roads in our queue? Um, does it move this one up and and are we affecting what we're going to be doing in the future in the next couple of years with our queue?
Your manager, Hoppy?
Um, your worship, I I would defer that to to Chad if he could reply, please.
Okay, thank you. Director Horn?
Through your worship to Counselor Lacy, short answer is no. Uh, these works would be in addition to and the next couple of years will be focusing on the reconstruction of the seventh line. And those works would still proceed.
Thank you. Counselor McClellan?
Oh, thank you, worship. I was just going to comment that I recent very recently drove on the third to go to the doctor's office and I don't think we really have a choice here. The road is crumbling beneath us. So I definitely support Counselor Harrison McIntyre on this one.
Counselor Jeb?
Thank you, worship. This is similar to what happened to the fourteenth. It got so bad that we couldn't do another year waiting and waiting for the DCs to be collected. Question, and that's going to last seven to ten years, what we did for the fourteenth. So whenever um, seven to ten years is up and it does get reconstructed again, um, will it come from the development charge at that time?
Director Horn?
Through your worship to Counselor Jeb, that's correct. It would be DC funded, so it would come from development charges. And I look to Director Vatri to confirm in that regard.
Director Vatri?
Uh, through your worship, uh, yes, uh, Counselor, I'm sorry. Uh, Director Horn is correct. Uh, it would be a DC funded project.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Harrison McIntyre?
Thank you, worship. Um, I I stand corrected. The funding source is right there on the first page, so no need to wait to next week or to look at the HECC fund. Um, just amend the motion to go with option three and to fund it from the asset replacement reserve.
Right, thank you. Any other question? And Counselor McClellan, my doctors in that in Tottenham, every time I go there, the receptionist, the nurse, the doctor, they're all on. Thank you. Moved duly moved by Counselor Harrison McIntyre, like my deputy mayor, that the court of being twenty-twenty-one dash seventeen be received. And further, that unbylaw be enacted authorized, the mayor clerk to enter into the site kind agreement the Simcoe County District School Board to facilitate the construction of an elementary Catholic school including a daycare component and future portable for the properties located at one hundred Willoughby Way, who do comfort subservient in a form of attachment number four. No, I didn't. I got the wrong motion. That one didn't get pulled.
That's the rectangular thing with doors and windows.
Yeah. As reported PD twenty-twenty-one oh nine be received, was that the staff be directed to undertake the road improvement work to pulverize, grade and pave with sixty millimeter HL four asphalt on the third line from the Canadian Pacific Trail, track to side road ten, as detailed in option three uh, reported PW twenty-twenty-one oh nine. And further, that the funding of three hundred and thirty-three thousand ninety-two dollars and sixty-five cents for these works be transferred from the asset replacement reserve fund. Uh, Counselor Harris McIntyre and Deputy Mayor Norcross, you still moving in second that motion. Good, thank you. I apologize. All in favor? Karen? Uh, CW five, and we have Counselor Harrison McIntyre and Counselor Noah. Counselor Harrison McIntyre.
Thank you, worship. Um, my question is about this rubberized surface at the Rotary Playground and this splash pad. Is this a permeable material? Um, in other words, is the water going to pool on top or is the water going to be able to infiltrate? Um, I would, we haven't had, not that I'm aware of from parks. I'm not familiar with that surface. Um, I'm concerned about slippage and the life cycle of it because, you know, it's fairly expensive in terms of replacing it. Um, we're just adding to the the things that we're going to have to pay for. Uh, and I don't know how what the life cycle is, so if I can get those questions answered. They don't have to be answered right now if if.
Director Burton?
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Mill, and to Counselor Harrison McIntyre. Um, two parts to that question. Yes, the surface does have a permeable component in which um, some surface runoff does permeate through the rubberized surface into a subsurface drainage system. As well, it's slope to allow for surface drainage for runoff and, excuse me, eliminate ponding, etc. on the surface. Um, the second part of your question in terms of the useful life, um, we don't have the exact manufacturer selected of the product that's going to be carried by the general contractor at this time. But in general terms, these are a twelve to fifteen year useful life from the expectancy of the surface.
Great. Thank you, Director Burton. I'll have Counselor Noah.
Yes, uh, thank you, worship. Just a quick question to Director Burton. Can you give me an approximate start date? Because I've had lots of residents ask when the start date is on Riverdale Park? You can answer that for me, please.
Director Burton?
Through you, Mayor Mill, and to Counselor Noe. Uh, in terms of a high level overview, uh, this will be ratified at council on May thirty-first, all things considered. Uh, they'll be given a notice on June first, hopefully to mobilize on the site within a two-week timeframe. And then we are scheduled with the installer of the equipment for the second week in August at the moment.
Thank you. Counselor Harrison McIntyre?
All right. Thank you, your worship. Back to this rubberized surface. Um, currently at the splash pad, I believe it's poured cement. Um, um, you know, the the rationale for changing it um, to rubberized surface treatment is that it's more functional and accessible. Um, and it's a safe and inclusive play. Um, I definitely get the safe, you know, definitely a kid falling and hitting their head on a rubberized surface would be uh, less um, dangerous than on concrete. Um, that occurs to me, but I have been to the splash pads many times with lots of kids and I've we've never had any issues. So I'm I'm just concerned, I I'm wondering where this uh, request came from to upgrade to this rubberized surface. Um, because it is fairly expensive and again, we're going, we're looking at something that we're going to have to replace over and over again.
Director Burton?
Through you, Mayor Mill, and to Counselor Harrison McIntyre. Um, a couple of components there. The timing of the application was in two thousand, two thousand and nineteen, which precedes my time, so I can't um, fully explain or give you the rationale as to why that surface treatment was proposed. I do support the rationale that it is an enhanced surface for safety uh, in high-traffic areas when you're utilizing um, the water features and all those considerations of slips, trips and falls that could occur in that area. Um, and in terms of the replacement value, I mean, every fifteen-year cycle that this may potentially need to be replaced, the council of that day would have the decision to revert it back to the concrete surface or continue with the replacement of the rubberized surface treatment. Just to put that out there in context, there's nothing that we do uh, to the surface that can't be transferred back to um, its previous state.
Thank you. Counselor Harrison McIntyre?
And just to be clear, um, is the the grant that we're receiving from the federal government in the province in is it imperative that we install this rubberized surface as for the application?
Director Burton?
Through you, Mayor Mill, and to Counselor Harrison McIntyre. That's correct. All four components that are identified under the funding agreement would have to proceed for us to receive any of the grant.
I I probably should have asked, I probably should have asked that first. All right.
All right. Any else? Anybody else where I called a motion? Okay, Counselor Sainsbury.
It's it's just that it's sort of part of this. Um, I had a call from somebody and they wondered what happened since we're doing so many wonderful things in Riverdale Park. Whatever happened to the all-wheel skate park? Uh, with the OPP and the fundraising, if we could just get some kind of an update just generally from Mr. Burton in the future, the near future. Then there's no answers because we haven't heard back and because of COVID, I guess they couldn't do much fundraising. But we we don't know the status of it, so I couldn't answer the question for this person.
It's it's been put on hold, Counselor Sainsbury.
Thanks.
Moved by Counselor Harris McIntyre, second by Counselor Noah, that report of PRC twenty-twenty-one dash ten be received, and further, spending increases to capital project of PR three-one-nine-zero-three-nine to an upset limit of of one billion, two, one million thirty-six thousand nine hundred dollars necessary to include the rubberized surface at Rotary Playground in Riverdale Park's splash pad area. The additional site furniture and all other elements is outlined in the town's successful grant funding application. Under investing in Canada, infrastructure program be approved. And further, as a rate of the result of a successful grant application that the funding source for capital project of PRC three-one-nine-zero-three-nine be adjusted as all three hundred eighty-five thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars in federal grant funding, three hundred and twenty-one dollars, six hundred and one dollars in provincial grant funding in the balance of three hundred and twenty-nine dollars, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars uh, to be further from the town's asset replacement reserve. And further, the staff be directed to include additional funding as part of the twenty-twenty-two capital budget delivered the Lions Pavilion at Riverdale Park, replaced from project this described in the ICIP grant application. And further, the staff be directed to include the additional splash pad, create structure project as part of the twenty-twenty-two capital project as described in the ICIP program application. Any questions? All in favor? Karen, thank you. All right. Recommendation is that the committee of the whole convenes in the close session. At what time, Counselor Jeb?
Eight forty-six, your worship.
To discuss two items, CS one, seven-one-six-three, the third line of New Tecumseh, and item CS two, verbal report of the C A O recalling with Dallas the pipeline and the supply of water of succeed and the next steps. Mover and second, please. Counselor McClellan, Counselor Noah, all in favor? Good, thank you.